Okay, I have been informed by the registrars that we have a quorum, and we are at a couple minutes past the appointed hour. I will ask the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, Warren Minette, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to have a moment of silence for all those who passed in the past year, especially Ephi Tolles, who served as secretary in the administration office up at the high school. You may be seated. Town meeting is governed by Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary law. As moderator, my name is Bill Shemath. I recognize the sponsor of an article. First, and we have the Finance Committee recommendation, and then you need to come up to the microphone if you wish to speak and state your name and address. I'd like to recognize some individuals who've served our town well, who either have moved on to other things or have retired. First of all, our longtime town administrator, Adam Gardett, now is a town manager in Northbridge. He's served our town well, and I want to thank him on behalf of all the officials and people of this community for his service. Bruce Gagnon has retired from the Water Department. We thank him for his service. Robin Joyce was a longtime member of the Finance Committee, who served with distinction. We thank her for her service. And the following individuals have retired from our regional school system, and I would like to recognize their service. Jennifer Bule, who was a teacher for 11 years. Lynn Dobson, a clerk, 29 years. Lisa Grunier, nurse, 15 years. Mark James, teacher, 36 years. Stan Jablonski, teacher, 33 years. Bob LaRoe, teacher, 24 years. Kathy Lepred, cafeteria worker. Sonia O'Coin, 30 years cafeteria worker. Gail Roach, 20-year teacher. And Cynthia Proud, teacher for 24 years. I would like to give a round of applause for their service to our community. In addition to the warrant, you will find a couple of informational items on the tables out front. One is a graph showing the progress of the pavement work that we're doing in town, and a list on the other side of the priority of the roads as per the road study that the town voted the debt exclusion for. You also have a document entitled Asset Management Study that also addresses the roadwork from the highway superintendent. Couple of announcements. The 2017 Spencer Christmas Parade of Lights will be occurring on Saturday, December 2, at 7:00 p.m., with a snow date of Sunday, December 3, at 7:00. The parade route will start at David Proudey High School and will run down Main Street to Old Main Street, concluding at the Town of Spencer Highway Barn. Please join us for a night of beautiful twinkling lights, wonderful lighted floats, and lighted fire trucks to celebrate this festive Christmas season. And thanks to the Celebration Committee and all the businesses and community organizations that are supporting this event. Now that we're approaching the snow season, the Select Board has approved the winter parking ban, and you can find that on the town website. Now, we are ready to introduce the folks up here. I'm Bill Shemath, your town moderator. This is Laura Torri, town clerk. To my right is the Board of Selectmen. Gary Woodbury, vice chair. Ralph Hicks, member. John Stevens, member. Warren Minette, clerk. The chair, Tony Pepe, had a prior commitment. Behind the Select Board is our interim town administrator, William Ross, and our town council, Stan Weinberg. Mary Brainy, chair of the Finance Committee, will introduce her members. But first, she has some information for you on a very important joint initiative between the Board of Selectmen and the Spencer Finance Committee. Mary?
Thank you, Bill. Good evening. I'm going to introduce the members first, and then I'll talk about the initiative. To my left, Tom Parker and Paul McLaughlin, vice chair of the Finance Committee. Directly behind me, Chris Bowen. To his left, Chris Woodbury. Then Nancy Herholtz and Paul Bouvier. And we thank them all for their service. You may remember that at the Fall Town Meeting, we in the Finance Committee, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen, talked about having some initiative to do some financial planning so that we can get ready for next years, this coming year's budget, FY '19. We held eight public forums and focus groups in September and October, and I really appreciate everyone who took the time out to attend. We used a process called SOAR in which people identified the strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results that they would like to be seeing in the Town of Spencer. And we added one other, and that is, if money were no object, what would you like to see? The results were fairly consistent. People really want a nice... They want financial security for the town. They want a good-looking downtown and some gathering places. All the details are posted on the town website. If you go to www.spenserma.gov, and at the top, there's a menu bar that says Boards. If you drop that down and look at Finance Committee, you will find the link that has the actual words from all eight of the forums that we did. And there's another document that has more of a summary of it. That was part one. Part two, we have just recently put together, and it was John Stevens from the Board of Selectmen and Tom Parker and Chris Woodbury from the Finance Committee that developed a survey. And we would be very, very appreciative if all of you would take the survey. And by "all of you," everyone from... Who lives in town, from age six to whatever the upper limit is. You may also take it if you work in town, work for the school district, or own a business in town. It's online, once again, on the Spencer, Mass. website, And in the column where it says "news," which is the left-hand, sort of the second column, it says "news," and there's a link that says "survey, please complete." And you click on that, there's a little explanation, and then the survey begins. It should take about 10 minutes. The survey... There's a link on the Richard Sugden Library website. And I know that Mrs. Woodbury will be putting a link on the Senior Center website. If you would prefer to take it in paper form, there are some paper copies at the table where you checked in this evening. You can take it and turn them in tonight or at your convenience. We will also be putting paper copies down at the library and at the Senior Center. But I truly encourage everyone to take it online. It will help us to figure out what issues are important to all of you. What do you want to see in your town? What are you willing to pay for? What are you willing to work to get? And so we hope that we have a large response. It will be open until December 15. So, thank you all very much.
We also like to thank Spencer Cable Access for televising tonight's events, and Aaron Keys for manning the camera. Back in 1907, Oklahoma, on this date, became the 49th state to join our union. And this month in history, the Mayflower Compact represented the first opportunity for self-government in our nation. And the pilgrims gathered together on the ship and agreed, because they were outside the colonial Virginia Charter, to agree to write laws together that they would all agree to live by to the betterment of their community and their citizens. Tonight, we engage in the purest form of democracy in that same tradition. And thank you all for coming this evening. Article 1 is an authorization to pay for prior fiscal year expenses. This requires a nine-tenths vote. The article I have, the motion is made by Warren Minette and seconded by John Stevens. To waive the reading and approve Article 1 as printed on the warrant. Mary, Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Mr. Minette?
I make a motion to accept the Article 1 as it's read.
A motion has been seconded by Mr. Stevens. Any discussion? This is a conservation commission prior expense. It's a routine matter and requires a nine-tenths vote. Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Seeing none opposed, the chair will... The moderator will declare a unanimous vote. Article 2 is an authorization to rescind the previously approved budget for the FY 2018 general government operating budget. Every year, we don't know certified free cash from the state until the state passes its budget in July and then certifies our free cash in early fall. Therefore, we always need to come back and balance our budget. The first step of that process is Article 2, to rescind the prior budget contingent upon a positive vote on Article 3, which it would establish the new budget. Motion I have by Mr. Minette, seconded by Mr. Stevens, is to move to waive the reading and approve Article 2 as presented on the warrant. Mr. Minette?
I make a motion to accept Article 2 as it's read.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article contingent upon the passing of Article 3.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article 3 is an authorization to appropriate the revised FY 2018 general operating budget. Motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant. Motion by John Stevens, seconded by Warren Minette. Basically, there is $441,000 in what we call new growth. That is new revenue that's come on the tax base. That is recurring revenue available for recurring expenses. The various items include some adjustments based on contracts with some department heads. The town received a grant to be able to hire four new firefighters. And the match for that, as well as some of the expenses, are here. The preparation for some of the work at some of the parks, including putting the town in the best position to potentially open Luther Hill Park, if we're able to next summer, is also included. Mr. Stevens?
You have the breakdown of revisions. I'll do my best to answer them. We also have department heads and our interim town administrator, if you need a further explanation, what's behind those changes.
Okay, hearing no questions, and you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article 4 is an authorization to transfer monies to the Water Commission Capital Efficiency Account. This is... The Water Department runs by what we call an enterprise fund, so they... Whatever money they take in for fees, they pay for their service in their capital accounts. They're basically transferring money from their version of free cash to their account to do capital or physical improvements to make the water system better to run. Motion I have from John Stevens, seconded by Warren Minette, is to waive the reading and approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant. Mary, Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Mr. Stevens?
I have nothing to add. I move the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, you're ready for... Kurt? Can you come up to the microphone, please?
It is. I guess I wasn't talking closely enough.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article 5 is an authorization to transfer monies to a reserve fund. Every year, the town receives a certain amount of money in certified, what we call free cash, which is basically leftover money you haven't spent from the year before. And the town, to the best of its ability, tries to set the money aside in various savings accounts, one of them being the sick leave buyback account. Motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article 5 as printed in the warrant. Motion by Ralph Hicks, seconded by Gary Woodbury. Mary, Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Dr. Hicks?
I move the motion as read, be approved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article 6, this is an authorization to transfer monies to fund capital expenditures. We have a process by which capital expenditures go through the Capital Planning Improvements Committee. They did hold a meeting and vote to recommend the various items listed in this article. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval as printed.
Motion is by Dr. Hicks, seconded by Gary Woodbury. To move to waive the reading and approve Article 6 as printed on the warrant. Dr. Hicks?
I move the motion be approved as printed.
Any questions or comments? Sir, come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Matthew DeFosse, 7 Paul's Drive. I'm not quite sure if this is appropriate, but I'm looking at the figures here. For instance, the Fire Department, and I don't know if you take this into account, but would it be feasible, maybe, to work with surrounding communities and buy equipment in bulk and maybe be able to negotiate a better deal?
Dr. Hicks?
Yeah, I don't know if that's been explored. Is Chief Parson or Deputy Chief Locken...
The moderator will recognize the Fire Chief.
The chief can better handle that than I can. No, it's a great idea. It's a good question. I'm guessing he's already done this, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
All the Ternokew purchases off the state bid contract, it is the lowest price that's out there. The state actually goes out the bill for a bid for every community in Massachusetts, and that's the contract we buy off of.
Any other questions or comments?
In regards to the survey...
Can you address through the microphone, sir?
In regards to the survey for Browning Pond, that's $10,000.
Yes.
Why does the town pick up the whole... The cost for that? It seemed to me that maybe that could be divided between the two, seeing as there's a disagreement between both. Either that, or maybe they pick it up if they're disputing.
Good question, sir. The reason we're picking it up is we're the ones that are crying foul. The Boy Scouts allege that it is their land. Many of you know that we already had some preliminary survey work done, and the preliminary survey work indicated that it is most likely on town land. Also, it is a great pond. A great pond is covered by state law that says public access must be made to all great ponds. That is the only great pond in Spencer. All the other lakes and ponds are not great ponds in Spencer, and we have many, as you know. The reality of it is, we have to pay for it in order to prove that we own it. It's unfortunate. This goes back to colonial times when Browning Pond Road was considered a county road, even before we were the United States of America. And like a lot of things that were done in those days, things could be moved around one way or the other. It's not like today, where before the state or the town goes out and does anything, they send surveyors out, they mark it off, and make sure that, you know, that the town or the state owns the land that's about to be worked on for road construction. In those days, they just did it. We are pretty confident that it's on our property. However, since we're the ones that are saying we have to... We want to get our land back, in plain English. Unfortunately, we're responsible. Do I think the Boy Scouts should have to pay for it? Of course I do. My feeling is, they've taken the land away from the citizens of Spencer, and not only the citizens of Spencer, but in the area. Anybody who wants to put a bolt in that right now in Browning Pond cannot do so unless they happen to own property on Browning Pond. And that's against the law that developed and created great ponds. It's no different than walking on the seashore, where many, many, many years ago, millionaires tried to block private citizens from walking on the beach in front of their property. And the courts finally ruled that up to the high tide line, citizens have access to the ocean that way. Well, Browning Pond, citizens have to have access. And that's on the ramp, which we are pretty confident is on town land. And unfortunately, we do have to pick up the tab to right the wrong. I'm sorry.
Very briefly, sir.
You also have on there a generator, moving a generator to the police station. Why would you be moving it? And what's it used for? Would it be more prudent to possibly buy another generator?
The moderator will recognize the police chief, Dave Derritt, to answer that question.
And possibly use one as a backup, and maybe it'd be cheaper to buy a new one?
For those of you that weren't aware, we'd shared for many years a generator with the Fire Department. We'd become more technology and things of that nature in the Police Department. The generator just wasn't sufficient. Plus, we're on a different circuit, so that we could go down without power, and the Fire Department would be on, and the generator wouldn't kick on. So the first thing we looked at was something used. The generator at Lake Street Schools, very good condition. It's more than we need as far as power goes, and probably the moving expense that we're looking for is only a tenth of what the generator would actually cost. So it's a really good deal. And we had some folks come out, because I wasn't a real expert on it. We had some folks come out, take a look at it, and concurred with that, and they're going to help us move it.
Any further questions or comments?
No, I just want to indicate that when you run a computer on a generator, you have to have a very steady line of power. If it waivers on the least bit, it will do damage and destroy the computers. And in this day and age, that's the reason they need their own computer.
Okay, sorry, hand up here. Ma'am, can you come to the front and state your name and address, please?
Charlie Hassett, Lake Widdmore Drive. On the Lake Street School, UST removal. What is UST for $55,000?
Bill, that's the underground storage tank.
It's an underground storage tank, in case you didn't hear that.
There are governmental regulations that if you've had oil in tanks and they're underground, that they need to be removed. The town has done that in various stages, and we need to do that here. Any further questions or comments?
And what are we doing on Mechanic Street? 20 Mechanic Street? Do we own that?
Who would like to answer that question?
Do you have that, Ralph?
Yeah, yeah, we do own the building. It's to tear the building down. It's decrepit, it's dangerous. If somebody went in there, they could hurt or get killed. And we do own the building, so it's our responsibility to take it down.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article 7, authorization to amend a previously approved article in regard to all the various road projects, both downtown and on Route 31. We had borrowed and requested special legislation from the legislature, thinking that we would need it in order to do the borrowing we needed. But the legislature passed what is known as the Municipal Modernization Act, and upon recommendation of Bond Council, we are undertaking this article to reflect that borrowing took place under the Municipal Authorization Act rather than under special legislation. The motion I have is to approve... The article is printed in the warrant, requires a majority vote. Motion by Gary Woodbury, seconded by Warren Minette. Mary, Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Mr. Woodbury?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you could see on the article written, it's pretty clear. We asked for 30 years. The state came back and gave everybody that opportunity, so there was no special legislation needed.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article 8 is an authorization to amend the personnel bylaws. What is your point of order, Mr. Nordquist?
Kurt Nordquist, Gail Dreyf. I'm going to ask the moderator for town council ruling on Article 8. The last three, Park and Rex, the bottom three, they are new hires, and that is always done at an annual meeting, and not a Fall Town Meeting. So I like the town council's ruling that these are out of order.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes and no, they're new hires. Everybody knows by now, if you don't... I'm sorry that you didn't hear. That back in 2012, when the school district got incinerated by Dr. Naeman... Should say Resoneman, I'm not... Resoneman, all right? Money had to be taken from the town budget. One of the things that was hit hardest was Luther Hill Park. These positions, for a gazillion years, existed, all right? They were taken out because there was no money in the budget. So I'm not so sure, Kurt, that they really are new positions, but we will ask Stan Weinberg, our council, to rule on that.
With respect to the question asked, I'm not aware, and I'll certainly check later on in the bylaws, of any restriction that requires new hire action be taken only at an annual town meeting. And I believe in the past, action similar to this has been taken at special town meetings. So my suggestion is, we proceed with the vote, and if it turns out that there is some conflict, then we'll have to deal with that and have an amendment at a subsequent town meeting. But off the top of my head, I don't have the benefit of any bylaws or research with me at this moment. But my understanding is, there is no such restriction that would prohibit the town from acting tonight on this particular article.
Well, I...
If you can direct me to some language that suggests otherwise, I'd be glad to take a look at it.
I'm not against firepowerment, but these three are new hires. I mean, new jobs, like Mr. Hicks says, but they were taken out. Now they're being put back in with no job description. It's... It's should come to annual town meeting and have it all spelt out.
First, these are currently listed in the personnel bylaws. What it is, is a salary adjustment, and there are currently job descriptions for those positions. It's nothing new that wasn't there when the beach was open, and those positions were never deleted from the personnel bylaw.
Even though it's a personnel bylaw, Mr. Moderator, we never had a waterfront director and administrative assistant in all 35 years I lived in this town. So that is a new job description. And if town council... I just have to refer it to the town administrator, because he must be... He's here tonight, and he's the town administrator. If town council can't answer that question, I think that's wrong.
We will proceed on the basis of the town council's ruling. And as he said, if for some reason that turns out we need further action at the annual, we will do so. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. And I do want to say that I questioned whether these were new positions before we had the Finance Committee meeting, and they are not.
and they are not. They had not been funded, but they have been in existence.
So the motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant. Vote required as a majority vote.
Mr. Moderator.
By Mr. Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Minette. Mr. Woodbury.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the pending motion be amended with the following language: delete the last sentence related to hours of work, and replace the sentence with the following language: Full-time firefighters shall receive overtime for hours worked over 53 hours per week over a two-week period. In the rationale is, full-time firefighters work an average of 42 hours per week. However, under the Fair Labor Standard Act, firefighters are not paid overtime until the hours worked exceed 106 hours over a two-week period. Mr. Moderator, here is my motion.
Is there a second to the motion? So we will now move to discussion on the amendment. This would basically change the last sentence of the article, where it currently reads, "Full-time firefighters shall work 56 average weeks and receive overtime for hours worked over 56 per week in a two-week period," to, "shall receive overtime for hours worked over 53 hours over a two-week pay period." Mr. Weinberg.
I think we're going to have the amendment drawn. Can we just have a second just to check on it?
Bear with us, Mr. Moderator, we'll get this correct yet, I promise.
Mr. Woodbury.
My motion to amend Article Eight related to the personnel bylaws is, delete the sentence related to hours of work, replace...
May the moderator make a recommendation?
You certainly may.
If you're submitting new language, do you care to withdraw your prior?
I will withdraw that.
And does Mr. Minette concur with that?
I concur.
Thank you. Mr. Woodbury.
My new amendment on Article Eight is, delete the last sentence related to hours of work, replace that sentence with the following language: Full-time firefighters shall receive overtime for hours worked over 53 hours in a seven-day work week. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment. Hearing none, we are voting on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Amendment carries. Now, any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Article Nine is an authorization to amend the zoning bylaws. This relates to various housekeeping items related to the various solar facilities in town. And the, for the record, the planning board did hold a public hearing and did vote in favor of recommending this article. And that vote in documentation was posted on the town website. Also, please note that a copy of the zoning bylaw amendment was on file with the town clerk and was available for viewing during regular business hours. The motion I have on Article Nine is to waive the reading and approve Article Nine as printed on the warrant. This will require a two-thirds vote because it is an amendment to the zoning bylaws. Motion by Gary Woodbury, seconded by Ralph Hicks. Mary, Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to defer to the recommendation of the planning board.
Mr. Woodbury.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that we approve Article Nine as stated.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article Ten, authorization to add a bylaw on snow removal on sidewalks in the central business district.
Clear order, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Weinberg.
On the prior article, was what declared that a two-thirds vote?
The moderator will declare that a two-thirds vote. Article Ten, authorization to add a bylaw on snow removal on sidewalks in the central business district. Motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article Ten as printed on the warrant. Motion by Ralph Hicks, seconded by John Stevens. Basically, this would establish some requirements for property owners to engage in some snow removal in a certain area of town, downtown. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to defer to the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen.
Dr. Hicks.
I move the article be approved pending the following amendment. The amendment will read, remove the following language, "Both sides of Main Street from approximately 96th Main Street to 188th Main Street," and insert the following language: "Both sides of Main Street, including all parcels located or addressed from 96th Main Street to 176th Main Street and 95th Main Street to 159th Main Street." And I will speak on that when you're ready, Mr. Moderator.
Is there a second to your amendment, Doctor? Do you have it in writing?
If I may, Mr. Moderator.
On the amendment, Doctor.
Absolutely. When the construction project is completed, it will, the new construction will stop approximately oh, a few feet beyond the driveway here, and the same thing with the bank. There was no new construction done in the area in which we are proposing to take out of the motion. Hence, there were no obstacles on the sidewalk like there are with the new construction, unfortunately. And so people came to the town meeting, a selectman meeting, excuse me, and brought that to our attention, and it makes only perfect sense that there is no reason for us to have that in this article. Town tractor should be able to remove that snow without a problem. The problem is, the rest of the sidewalk, the town tractor can't get around, the stanchions that are there for the light poles and a couple of other things that had to be there. So, Mr. Moderator, any questions?
Any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote on the amendment. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. The amendment carries. Now, we are back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Motion carries. Article Eleven is a motion to authorize to accept Richland Drive as a public way. This would accept a road that has been a private way and make it a public way, sponsored by the planning board, who held, did hold a meeting and vote in favor of this article. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
The motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant. Motion by Selectman Stevens, seconded by Selectman Woodbury. Mr. Stevens.
You may have seen the drawings on the back wall that show the location of the road in question, and we're informed that they met all the requirements to, for the town to take it over as a public way.
Any questions or comments? Sir?
Please.
Good evening, I'm Paul Delacqua, the town planner. For the record, I believe it's Richland Avenue.
It is.
The warrant says Richland Drive, I believe, so you should probably amend that properly.
The moderator will accept an amendment to change drive to Avenue.
Thank you. Precision is everything. Thank you, Paul.
And does Mr. Woodbury agree with the amendment?
I do.
So, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. Any further comments on the main motion? Hearing none, you're ready for a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Those opposed, do the same. That would conclude the business of the town meeting. The town moderator waits for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dr. Hicks, seconded by Warren Minette. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Cards opposed, we stand adjourned.
Hear, hear.